Good afternoon. Welcome to the September 3, 2019 Lawrence City Commission meeting. We will start our agenda with the approval of the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Do anybody want to change the agenda?
I would request that we move our executive session until after the City Manager's report and review of the calendar.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Ananda, second by Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. We'll move that to the end of the executive session, to the end of the meeting. Okay, B will do recognition and proclamations. Our first one will be to proclaim the week of September 8 through the 14th as Suicide Prevention Week.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Carrie Britt. I'm the Chair of the Douglas County Suicide Prevention Coalition. The Coalition was founded five years ago with a mission to make Douglas County a community free of suicide deaths through prevention and awareness efforts. These efforts include training individuals to recognize and respond to at-risk individuals. Such trainings include mental health first aid and assist or applied suicide intervention skills training, providing education through community events and activities, advocating for implementation of evidence-based programs such as Zero Suicide, offering resources such as brochures promoting the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, which is 1-800-273-TALK, and raising awareness about the serious and growing public health problem. According to the CDC, suicide rates increased in nearly every state between 1999 and 2016. In Kansas, the rates increased 45% during that same time period. And in Douglas County, suicide rates have increased 82% during the last 20 years. In 2017, 544 Kansas residents and 17 Douglas County residents died by suicide, and several thousand friends and families were forever changed. Suicide is rarely caused by a single factor. In fact, many people who die by suicide are not known to have a diagnosed mental health condition at the time of death. Other problems often contribute to suicides, such as those related to relationships, substance use, physical health, employment, housing, financial, and legal issues. In 2018, 322 Douglas County residents were treated in LMH's emergency department for a suicide attempt, and 740 residents were treated for suicidal ideation. The ages of these residents ranged from 11 to 73 for suicide attempts, and 10 to 89 for suicidal ideation. Each of these statistics is alarming. Each of these numbers is a real person in our community with family, friends, and neighbors impacted by their suicide experience. These people are the reason we, the Douglas County Suicide Prevention Coalition, exist. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll read the proclamation now. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 11.1 minutes; and whereas in 2017, 544 residents of Kansas and 17 residents of Douglas County died by suicide; and several thousand friends and family members were changed forever by losing those people. And whereas the Douglas County Suicide Prevention Coalition, which is comprised of representatives from agencies and schools including Headquarters, Burt Nash, LMH Health, Douglas County Government, Willow Domestic Violence Center, Heartland Community Health Center, Communities in School Mid-America, Lawrence Douglas County Health Department, the Lawrence Public Schools, the Baldwin School District, and the community at large, who are dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths and the pain for those affected by suicide deaths through training, educational programs, and outreach. We urge that all Douglas County residents recognize that suicide is a significant public health problem in Kansas and Douglas County and declare suicide prevention a priority. Support the development of accessible behavioral health services for all Douglas County residents, implementing national best practices in reducing suicide risk for people of all ages. Acknowledge that no single suicide prevention effort will be sufficient or appropriate for all populations or communities. And encourage initiative based on the goals and activities contained in the Douglas County Community Health Plan, the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention, the Zero Suicide of the National Action Alliance for Suicide Prevention, and the Way Forward by the Action Alliance's Suicide Attempt Survivor Task Force. Now therefore, I, Lisa Larson, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 8 through the 14th, 2019, as Suicide Prevention Week. And I urge all Lawrence and Douglas County residents to learn how they can help because suicide prevention is everyone's business. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our second proclamation is to proclaim Saturday, September 14th, 2019, to be Lawrence Drive Electric Day.
Hi, you and Commissioners. My name is Karen Pagel Miners. I am Chair of the local Sierra Club group here in Lawrence. The National Sierra Club is a sponsor for the Drive Electric Week all over the country. And the Sierra Club is cosponsoring with the Sustainability Action Network on Saturday. I would like to just take this time to point out a few tidbits on the Sierra Club electric vehicle fact sheet, which I put at your stations. Automobiles, above all else, have historically represented America's problem with dirty oil. A switch to plug in electric vehicles, or EVs, which require no gasoline and emit no tailpipe pollution presents a critical opportunity to slash pollution, create American jobs, reduce oil dependence, and forever change the impact of vehicles on our planet. So what's not to like about electric vehicles? They're good for the environment. Each year, we are burning through 121 billion gallons of gasoline, so that's three trillion tons of carbon pollution. Electric vehicles reduce, there's a 50% reduction of carbon dioxide if the power comes off the grid, and if the electricity is from solar, it's a 95% reduction. So that's all hugely significant. It's also good for your pocketbook, the cost of operating an electric vehicle, depending on where you live and the cost of electricity. Seventy-two cents per electric gallon equivalent if it's seven cents per kilowatt hour. They're telling us the US average figure, a dollar a gallon. Plus, there's very little maintenance, and there's no use of fossil fuels. I'm sure we have all become more and more aware of the effects of climate change. The last four years have been the warmest on record. The glaciers keep melting, and the hurricanes keep getting worse, and weather is becoming more and more erratic. And of course, the emissions continue to rise. We have to keep more fossil fuels in the ground as we move forward, and this might be a way to do it. On the back of this handout, there is, for anyone who's interested, if you're interested, there's a www.circlub.org/evguide. And Plug-in America also has a guide.
Thank you. I'll read the proclamation now. Whereas petroleum-fuelled vehicles are responsible for over 50% of our local greenhouse gas emissions and are a contributing factor to air pollution and climate disruption, threatening the health of our citizens and the sustainability of our planet. And whereas the United States transportation sector has surpassed the electricity generation sector in climate-warming emissions. And whereas plug-in electric vehicles use one-fifth the energy used by internal combustion engines and get 100 miles per gallon equivalent or better. And whereas plug-in electric vehicles produce no greenhouse gas emissions when charged with renewable energy, and only one-fifth of the greenhouse gas emissions when charged with fossil fuels. And whereas September 14th through the 22nd, 2019, has been designated as National Drive Electric Week throughout the United States to educate our citizens about the benefits of plug-in electric vehicles and to promote their adoption. Now therefore, I, Lisa Larson, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 14th, to be Lawrence Drive Electric Day, and encourage all citizens to attend the Lawrence Electric Vehicle Showcase at 3504 Clinton Parkway between 10:00 and 2:00 PM.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Bye.
All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Note, all matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Any Commissioner want anything pulled off the consent agenda?
Item C-8A.
Okay. Any other items? C-8A. Is there any member of the public that would like to have something pulled off the consent agenda for further discussion?
Can I get C-9A, I think, the one about the police task force?
C-9A?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Any other items? Okay, then I'll ask for a motion.
I've moved that we adopt the consent agenda, including all claims, with the exception of items C-8A and C-9A. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herbert, a second by Commissioner Bulleye, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, we'll start with C-8A.
So we had a pretty considerable discussion about this last week, and then we received the changed language that I'm just not sure accomplishes what we, as a commission, were looking at accomplishing. And so I wanted to have a discussion as a commission to make sure that this was what the rest of the commission was asking for when we modified the language, and then also to just have a broader discussion, hopefully, to talk about kind of the weight of this process, and, you know, looking at how we make policy decisions, and the fact that this isn't policy or administrative decisions, and how that would look different. And then understanding the burden of proof that would come with decisions around this. So kind of hoping for some foundational conversation, as well as dialogue around the language that we created. So I don't know if the Attorney's Office can answer those kinds of questions, or...
Randy Larkin with the City Attorney's Office. And do you have a specific question regarding...
So when we are making decisions based on this policy, and I've used an analogy where, you know, I'm developer, I have 100 acres of land, I want to develop it, and I say, here's my application, and here was what you had listed as what I had to include. I have one unit of affordable housing, and the commission says, no, we're not going to approve this. So can you kind of take me through what the burden of proof would be if I were to say, well, I relied on this language here, I met all of the requirements, and they still didn't approve it?
For an annexation?
Correct.
When you're annexing property, it's a legislative decision. So basically, to the extent that you do not act fraudulently, your decision will be approved. So you could deny it, prove it for no reason at all, it's at your discretion if it's an annexation. The other aspect is, you know, if you approve it or disapprove it, you have to follow the law, but there is no, like, it's not like quasi-judicial. You have wide latitude, wide discretion when considering any annexation that becomes before you, because you review that in your legislative capacity. And the standard of review would be basically what I just said. If they sued over the denial of an annexation, then the district court would have to find that either the action in denying it was illegal, or that somehow the commission acted fraudulently in making that decision.
So if I were to say, I relied on this document here, and here is what I did in order to rely on that, who carries the burden of proof of showing?
Whoever would be challenging the action of the board would govern, would have the burden of proof if it went to district court.
So not the city?
No.
Okay.
But administratively, would the planning department have the ability to keep an annexation off of a commission's agenda, based around the fact that, at an administrative level, they felt that community benefit had not been met? In other words, hypothetically, if I come with a plan to develop five acres of land outside of Lawrence, and I want that to be annexed, and I just flat-out tell the planning department, I have no community benefit to offer, I just want this property annexed as-is, and I want it developed, administratively, could they turn me away and say, we will not put this on an agenda for legislative approval?
And if that was the case, they have the right to appeal the decision of the planning director, and then you would see it in any event. So that decision would ultimately be yours, whether it comes directly from the planning commission, or if it's an appeal of a denial of an application.
So the language that we have is included in the agenda packet, but it's also in the document itself. And to me, it still requires that the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the page while I'm talking, that the city, thank you. Thirty-seven on the document.
Yeah, on the document, yeah.
So...
Page 37, 146.
Thank you. Thank you.
Plan?
Yes, 31 of the new packet. That's what I'm, yeah, sure, that's in there. But I think that we have three pieces of this in this conversation. One is the one that we change the language in. The other one is the definition of community benefit, and then 3.8. So I just wanted to make sure that when we look at those together, that we are saying what we intended to say, and if not, how can we say that? Oh, finally, it's page 21, not 31.
It's like different pages on it, it was computer.
So to me, what this says is, when we're looking at annexation of Tier 2 land, we have to consider those factors listed in that sentence. The next sentence is, "The city may, at its discretion, annex Tier 2 land when the need to accommodate demand is established and a community benefit is provided." So to me, that says, we are given permission to annex, again, not taking into account the broad latitude that we have, but we have given ourselves through this document permission to annex only when, theoretically, those two issues have been established, so the need to accommodate demand and a community benefit. So I think the thing that I would really like to see is an expansion of what community benefit is, because verbally, we know that. We know that this is just a very broad description of what a community benefit may be. I think that, given the amount of legal language that we've already used in this chapter, adding "but is not limited to," and then also include a few other examples. For example, the one that I used last meeting, which was, addresses the priorities developed by the commission and the strategic plan.
So you're looking at the community benefit definition?
Correct.
That's one on the side. With the idea, because I know last time we talked about adding "but is not limited to," but that didn't make it into the definition?
That wasn't in the motion that we made.
Right. Is there, was there a reason why? Was it, okay, just want to make sure. If there was something legal that we didn't...
No, it was my understanding that that was not part of the motion, and that the, among other factors, would cover what you were considering, if that's what you're talking about. If you're talking about the last sentence, that could always be added if the commission wanted to.
Mayor, if I may, I do recall discussion when combining what's in the plan as the non-exhaustive list with 3.8, Policy 3.8, that ultimately gives the City Commission full authority to define what community benefit is when the request is brought up to you. Maybe that was, and I recall that being part of the discussion as well.
For me, one of the tricky holdups has been the word "and," because when I look at Tier 2 annexation, you know, and it says Tier 2 land, when the need to accommodate demand is established and a community benefit is provided. So the use of the word "and" there, to me, excludes demand as being a community benefit. And the reality of the situation is residential vacant, residential lot development for our city is, you know, we heard it, we're down to about a 3.7-year inventory or something like that. So, you know, theoretically, within the run of your term, you're going to see that completely dry up, to where there is no residential land to be developed, other than, you know, an infill redevelopment. And the problem there becomes, is that with the use of the word "and" there, you can't simply declare a community benefit based on the fact that we are out of developable land. And from my perspective, being completely out of residential developable land, and then therefore annexing some into create developable land, is a community benefit, because it reinvigorates the market. It allows development to occur, it allows a supply to exist. You know, it allows supply and demand economics to work in the favor of the community, as opposed to against it. But that "and" prevents that from being defined as the community benefit. It simply says that the demand has to exist, and additional beyond that community benefit has to be provided. Which gets me back to my first issue I had with this, which was the absence of a 10-acre policy. Because, you know, when we're talking about 100-acre annexation, community benefit is probably more easy to establish within the confines of a budget. But if I have a four-and-a-half-acre parcel that I want annexed into the city, even though current requirements don't require me to go before the planning commission, I'm still required to get planning commission approval of community benefit. And how do you provide community benefit on a four-acre parcel? How do you do that?
So Matthew, would it be sufficient, then, in your mind, given the issues that you raised, to put the need to accommodate land and community benefit provided?
And/or.
Into the first sentence?
I would just "and/or" it. I would say, Tier 2 land, when the need to accommodate demand is established and/or a community benefit is provided. If you can prove that there is no demand for land, then yes, you need to provide a community benefit in order to be annexed in. If there's no need for that, if you can demonstrate a need for that land, then that in and of itself creates the benefit.
But what if that paragraph started with, "The city may, at its discretion, annex Tier 2 land, period." When addressing the annexation of Tier 2 land, the cities, excuse me, the city shall consider all of that list, the need to accommodate demand, and whether a community benefit is provided?
I think it makes sense to cut that off, if you're wanting to, because it seems to me those, that last sentence, if those two items aren't there, then we can't annex. If the demand and community benefit isn't provided, then we can't annex. Is that correct, Scott?
Well, the policy was designed to, remember, the whole thing works together. So infill, when available, is encouraged, right? That's our priority way to develop and accommodate growth. And if that can't be made, then we go out to the Tier 2 land and say, is there a need to look for areas outside of the city? We point to the residential property or residential use today as one that's getting to that point where there's a need to go outside of city limits because of the way we have the city designed to support other kinds of land uses, industrial and business park and that sort of thing, that we should be entertaining annexation requests as they come in. And in fact, we've had a couple that have gone a little bit toward the process, but haven't reached the planning commission or city commission. They were primarily residential annexation requests, they met the need, okay? So we supported it based on need. We didn't have the policy in place, but we would have also looked for fulfilling some community benefit. If there are opportunity, the land provides to provide some park property, for example, or affordable housing units, those kinds of things. So it's really, it is building a framework that both need and benefit, excuse me, are provided fully at the city commission's discretion, what that package looks like, based on 3.8, but it's setting up a policy that need and benefit are provided as we provide, as the city, the community as a whole adds value to that land through its rezoning policies, its rezoning districts, its infrastructure extensions, and on and so on and so forth. So that's the overall framework.
Okay, so back to my question. The way I read that sentence is it's at the discretion of the commission, but these two items have to be in play, and that is, the demand has to be there and the community benefit. And if you don't have both of those, because there's a word "and" there, then we can't annex. Is that correct?
Well, you can annex, it's at the discretion.
That's not what I'm reading.
But the policy would say that it should, it should, yes, the policy is to satisfy both of those things, not one or the other.
Theoretically, if it didn't satisfy both, it would come before the commission with a staff recommendation to reject, correct?
Correct, yeah. And perhaps a planning commission, but like every other policy in here, we're weighing all of these policies against land use requests, so...
So the struggle I've been having, that I've been having loads of conversations about, and I'm starting to wrap my mind around, is that by state statute, we have discretion, one way or another, regardless of what any of this says. But this is providing a framework by which we can make those decisions. However, we're providing a framework using legal language, such as "shall." And that is where my head kind of explodes, understanding that we rely on that state statute to make that decision, and that's what the court will rely on unless we acted in a discriminatory way. But we don't say that here, anywhere. And that has been kind of the root of the difficulty for me in discussing this. So when we say, if we were to have the sentence, "The city may, at its discretion, annex Tier 2 land," full stop, truth, right? And then we have, you know, the things that we want the world to know, that the commission will consider as we're making this decision, which would include that list of things in that first sentence, as well as the two things in that second sentence. And then adding the community benefit may include but is not limited to, as well as the strategic priorities of the commission to that definition, to me, addresses that to my satisfaction.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I think that's kind of where we've been discussing this past week, just trying to figure that out, and that's where I would like to go with it.
Craig, I know you and I discussed this today at length. Is there anything that we talked about that I'm kind of leaving out, or that I've muddied, as far as my understanding?
The only thing I would add is that the commission is the sole determinant of the adequacy of satisfying the, whether the conditions are met. So you will be the last say on whether those were met or not, based on the evidence given.
What I don't want to make, what I want to make sure does not happen is that it's stopped at the planning phase by the planning department, and does it come to us if, so they can...
Wouldn't necessarily be stopped, but very realistically, it would come to us with a staff recommendation to reject, which while not the nail in the coffin, I mean, certainly we've overturned staff recommendations before, but that is certainly not the norm. And I think it places an applicant severely behind the eight ball to have to come before the commission with a staff recommendation to reject. And I think that, I think it's frankly, solved simply by modifying "and" to "and/or," because that creates the ability... because that creates the ability for an applicant to say, "There is no residential land to develop in Lawrence, Kansas. Our inventory is dry." By bringing in inventory to the community, you are absolutely creating a community benefit.
I prefer the word "and." I think that's one of the issues that we've had with lack of guidance and change on different commissions in the past, you know. Horizon 2020 said we encourage annexation, and so, to me, this is a more formal way of saying that it's not that we're against annexation, but we have things that we want to see before we'll do that. So I like the "and."
Anything else? Anyone want to add to that?
I'd still love to hear an explanation of how you create community benefit on a five-acre parcel. The examples I've heard so far are park and affordable housing. How many homes are you going to put on a five-acre parcel?
Well, that one we just approved a few weeks ago had seven on two acres plus market rate housing, six or seven, so it's about 11 houses on two acres.
Right. So is that, is that going to require a five-acre development have? I mean, what's the, what's the magic number then?
Well, I mean, that's for the commission to decide in its discretion. You know, we can't make those decisions for our coming.
Certainly, but how do you go about doing a development when you have that uncertainty?
That's what elections are for.
As, you know, as a developer, here's what you're saying, is that, okay, if you develop a five-acre parcel, that you're going to, obviously, there's no room for a public park there, right? So you're going to have to provide affordable housing. We don't know how much, depends on the commission. They'll let you know when they vote for you or against you.
That's why this is a policy document. It's not a code.
And there's other community benefits beyond those two things.
Okay, so what could you provide on a five-acre parcel that would qualify as community benefit?
Arts amenities.
The paradigm.
Arts amenities.
Arts amenities?
That's what it says here.
What would an arts amenity look like on a five-acre parcel?
I think we're getting too much drilling down too deep.
Yeah, we definitely are.
It seems to me like we're drilling down too deep.
Well, I mean, I'll be honest with you. The 10-acre thing is a deal breaker for me. It is. I mean, last week, I let it slide by, but it is a deal breaker for me, because our policy says you do not have to go before the Planning Commission. Now we're adopting a document that says you have to have Planning Commission approval in spite of not having to go before the Planning Commission. I have a problem adopting language that specifically goes against our own city policy.
Okay. So you're the 10-acre is what you're looking for? Okay, and then "and/or," and then striking that last part of the sentence. I think what we'll do, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So those are the options that are.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're looking at. Matthew wanted "and/or," then he's concerned about the 10-acre is an issue. And then we've discussed removing that last part of that second sentence and moving that first part up to the beginning.
And then the definition of community benefit.
And then, yeah, the definition. Okay.
I think one thing before we go to public comment, is that there's kind of this perspective difference I see between, you know, me and Commissioner Herbert, is that I don't see people as entitled to annex. It's not an entitlement that people have. So saying that, just to me, that makes it sound like these people have an entitlement to annex, and I don't, I just don't feel that. That's why I like the word "and," is here are your guidelines, that if you want to be annexed, these are the two things that we need to see. But I don't like loosening that language to "or", because then it's, I'll set it up.
I think we'll open it to public comment now.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I have some, just some thoughts I want to say about the master plan. If we're going to make it harder for the city to grow by expanding and instead want a higher population density, then the city needs to make it easier for us to grow in size from within. There are three things the city could change to help us do that. One, increase the threshold for the number of signatures required to cause a supermajority vote. If we're going to grow from within, there's going to be opposition to new apartment complexes being built from all the "not in my backyard" NIMBY neighbors. It would be easier to get these complexes built if they have to pass a 3-2 vote as opposed to a 4-1 vote. Number two, include renters when it comes to who counts on a petition. Renters are more likely to be okay with new apartment complexes being built, because it means more options for them and more competition, which could lower rents. Property owners are going to be more resistant to change, especially if a new complex could potentially mean lower property values. Number three, let four unrelated adults live together in a single-family home. If we're going to say we need more population density, then we need to let more people live in the houses we already have, especially if we're enacting a plan that makes it harder to build new places to live. And not only that, but as I've mentioned before, the Golden Girls did an episode about this issue when the city found out that Blanche was renting out her place to three tenants, which was against code because they weren't all related. Does Lawrence really want to hang on to a policy that is counterproductive to its new master plan and a policy which would say to Rose, "Tough luck, old lady, but you're not related, so you can't live here. It's not up to code." So I just think if we're going to build from within, we need to remove the roadblocks that are going to keep that from happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Other public comment?
I'm Danielle Davy, Governmental Affairs Director at the Lawrence Board of Realtors. You all know very well by now what our position on this policy is, so I want to offer instead solutions. This looks more complicated than it really is. The top one is the language that exists in tonight's agenda. The middle is just me showing my work, and the bottom is the finished product after you apply the work. I think this language, after listening to your conversation so far tonight, actually goes really well with what Commissioner Nanda and Mayor Larson and Commissioner Herbert have been talking about in terms of broadening it to get rid of that "and," but also including demand and community benefit and maintaining those as considerations in annexation requests. This, I think, meets all of the things, all of the points that you all have discussed this evening, and I think would maintain the policy directive of conveying to the development community that we want to see measured growth, we want to see community benefit, but including that as a consideration and not necessarily as a requirement to get before you for consideration. And so I would submit this as a possible alternative language for you to consider.
Thank you, Danielle. Other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Bobby Florrie from the Lawrence Home Builders Association, and I just want to start by saying I really appreciate the discussion that you're having tonight. This is something that's been obviously going on for a long time, and I feel like we are kind of getting down to some of the points that we've been struggling over for a long time on this. I feel like it's obviously not ready to be approved tonight. So I would like for you to consider pulling back and giving this some more discussion. This is the kind of consideration that we were hoping for. So it's good to hear this, and frankly, I had never considered the "and/or" suggestion, and I think that's, you know, a great idea, but I hadn't considered it until Matthew just mentioned it tonight. So I think that this needs a little bit more time to work through. I do want to say that the Home Builders Association supports comprehensive planning, and we believe that new growth policies can and should be carefully crafted to encourage efficiency in service delivery and in housing opportunities for all. Certainly don't feel that it's an entitlement that developers have when they come in and ask for annexations, but the fact is, is that the more, the more barriers that are created for annexation, that does increase the risk for a developer. So yes, I don't think developers should have that entitlement either, but be aware that when you create more barriers, you are increasing the risk, which means that there will be probably a reduction in the investment. And that's something that, you know, we don't, we want to encourage investment in our community that works for everyone and provides housing for all. So with that, I would just like you to consider, please, continuing to work on Plan 2040. I think we're getting at it, a solution that can make this document truly collaborative, which I believe is your intent to start with. Thank you very much.
Other public comment on this item?
Hi, my name is Katie Walsh, and I'm speaking only for myself. I feel, I too am glad that you're having this discussion, because it's forcing all of us to think through it. I feel like the community benefit is important. This is happening all across the U.S. This is not a new idea for our nation. I wanted to point out to Commissioner Herbert that one amenity would be a mini fully accessible playground designed by artists, given by the developer, maintained by Parks and Rec. I think we're showing a little lack of imagination about what will benefit our community in a small space. I like some of what the Chamber and the Home Builders have come up with, but it's watered down. I think it's a little weak, because it does, it makes it too tight about what is a community development. I don't think it's broad enough. Thank you.
Other public comment? Bring it back up here.
So the process now for a 10-acre annexation, can we talk about what that looks like?
Yeah, this, it's a local policy that requires anything 10 acres or greater annexation request to go to the Planning Commission, just to put it to the test of the comp plan for a recommendation to the City Commission. Many times, they're accompanied by rezoning request anyway, so that's going to the Planning Commission anyway. But you saw one a couple of weeks ago that was less than 10 acres, that just went by ordinance to the City Commission. So I think, and we didn't consider that policy in building this framework, because we can always change our local policy to match the new plan, the new comprehensive plan, and would do so. The, you know, I'm a little concerned that if, if, if 10 acre, if I'm hearing that 10 acres is linked somehow to the community benefit or the need discussion, my fear there would be that we only get 10-acre requests to annex, and it's always better to do bigger annexations, plan infrastructure bigger and better that way. So I wouldn't want that to be sort of an unintended consequence of a policy in Plan 2040. So that's kind of the 10-acre discussion from my viewpoint.
Was that 10-acre limitation, was that in Horizon 2020?
I don't believe so. I think it was just a, an administrative policy even. Just, just again, to put the Planning Commission, get a kind of a layer of review that the City Commission could rely on against the comp plan.
So as far as how we want to change this paragraph, or if we want to change it anymore? Based on the, what was brought forth? The "and/or," or removing that last part of that second sentence, and moving that first part up to the beginning? Is that what you're thinking?
That's my preference.
So Jennifer, will you read that to me again, as you see it suggested?
"The city may, at its discretion, annex Tier 2 land. When addressing the annexation of Tier 2 land, the city shall consider the need to accommodate demand, whether a community benefit is provided, or the community benefit provided. Land, community land use inventories, market sector health, and residential valuation to income ratio, among other factors, when assessing the need for annexation."
And then also on the definition of community benefit was to add, the community benefit may include but not be limited to? And then also include in that definition the need to, to, that the community benefit would meet the current City Commission's strategic plan? That that would be part of it, the planning?
The priorities set by the City Commission.
As part of that definition of community benefit. Do you see a problem with that, Scott?
I don't see a problem. I just want, it feels like a little bit of change in policy development. It's fine. But I want to make sure that we're looking at 3.8, because that has the "shall" statement. So I don't want to have a conflict in 2.2 where, and maybe there's not a conflict here. I mean, I guess the big question is, do you want community benefit to be required by policy or optional by choice of developer?
I thought 3.8 pretty much said that.
It does, but the words in 2.2 seem to be taken a different, different direction. I want to make sure that you've looked at both of those policies.
So I'm okay with a "shall" being in place there, having a community benefit identified when that comes with a request for incentives. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's, yes, but that's a different thing yet.
Yeah, that's a different.
We can work on that too.
You're not going to have an annexation request.
Well, you, the way this 3.8 works, there may be incentives offered depending on what benefit is being provided. But my point is, the way the policies work right now, any annexa, any developer would come in and have an expectation to work with staff through the Planning Commission about what the community benefit is. An alternative to that policy is to say, well, you know, I'm a developer that I can provide need, but I don't, but I'm not going to do community benefit. So I want my request taken up under Policy 2.2, which says, "I'm providing need, look at all these other things. I'm providing 200 units of housing, but we're not going to do community benefit." Are you putting that on as a choice for a requister? Or do you see it as a requirement and a factor that you're not necessarily held to? You want to still consider it, but do you want to see some sort of discussion of community benefit?
So it's my understanding from the meeting last week that the intent of a lot of this was to essentially require a conversation between a developer and the city about community benefit.
Well, more than a conversation, I mean, it's, the policy is reflective of expectation of whether any request to annex is going to make a real effort to provide a community benefit. And there may be one out there that doesn't, isn't able to provide a community benefit for whatever reason. You'll see that, and it'll, in my opinion, we'll get a fair hearing in front of you about that issue. But by and large, most annexation requests will be able to provide some sort of community benefit identified through a process, right? Because it's not code, it's not objectively identified, because each one may provide, may be able to provide something else. So I really think your question is, do you want to make it required to provide a community benefit? Or do you want to let that be something a developer brings to the table to provide justification or, you know, warrant the annexation into the, into the community?
That's where I want to see it, required.
Well, that's what 3.8 does. That's the way I read it. I don't know. But 2.2, I mean, that, that's just addressing the need to annex.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you were 2.2 in the frame, they, sure, you're going to consider what the community benefit is being, being offered, then I can see it not, and that's why I said, I want to make sure we talked about it, because it could read as in conflict, unless we carefully wordsmith it in 2.2, that it's not in conflict with requiring the community benefit in 3.8.
So given the expanded definition that we've been discussing of community benefit, what I saw 3.8 saying is that there would be a community benefit described that may or may not be part of this list, but they would work with the city staff in order to identify a benefit. For example, meeting the housing needs of the community. For example, I don't know, connecting a road somewhere somehow. I don't know, connecting a road somewhere somehow, you know, et cetera.
Not quite. You know, again, we've made a distinction throughout all of our discussions with steering committee and Planning Commission and stakeholders, that community benefit needs to go past satisfying need or basic infrastructure requirements. Now, there could be something linked to infrastructure, it could be land donated for the next water tower or something, you know, something that, or, you know, something negotiated with the city in terms of a real estate deal.
But I think that there's room for creativity.
Sure.
In identifying what that community benefit is. And while what they identify as a community benefit in conversations with staff might not meet staff's determination of what a community benefit is, and that would certainly be in a staff report for us to review, but again, I think that that broad discretion that the Commission has through state statute would say, well, we consider what they bring to the table is what they perceive as their community benefit through conversations with you all, and we move forward in that way.
But that is why we try to put a little bit of definition to what community benefit is, at least today and for the foreseeable future, right? These are the kinds of things that satisfy community benefit. And affordable housing is a big one. It just is. Because if I think about the next 20 years of development, and depending on the policy that we set in Plan 2040 is going to dictate whether our future includes affordable houses, or, you know, housing for all incomes as we grow likely west. And so that's, as we've done this, had been a huge part of the discussion.
And I think this does a very good job of addressing the priorities that we as a city, as a community, as a county have at this current moment. But in 2039, those might look significantly different, which is why it was important for me to add the priorities identified by the City Commission at the time. And, you know, if you look at our priorities today, that could be a really broad range of benefits brought to that table.
Absolutely could. But the, and the other thing I would note is that we can't forget the, the rest of 3.8, which talks about, which may include offsetting incentives to the requister. This, this, this framework wasn't intended that all of this be on the burden of the development and the developer. It was intended to get collaboration between the city and other partners in the community, and possibly offsetting incentives by the city, to get the school district involved. We know that school and parks and utilities and other service providers all have to be a part of annexing property and building our community out from its borders. And so, it wasn't necessar, it's not meant to harm any development. It's meant to collaboratively build neighborhoods and community together and get us all thinking in that direction.
So when I look at the, the way we've discussed rewording it by removing that last part of that last, that second sentence, it seems to me like what we're talking about there in Tier 2, in 2.2 is, it says the city shall consider all these things. And then all of a sudden, at the very end, if you would leave that on, it just throws in community benefit. So this paragraph seems to me to be more of a consideration of several factors. So by taking that last part of that sentence off, I don't see how that, because you still have it in 3.8.
I agree. Again, I think we can wordsmith it for it all to work in that way, if that's your desire.
Is that what you're wanting?
I, I would prefer, yeah, to have that with the language that we proposed for 2.2, ensuring that 3.8 is consistent with the intent of that language in 2.2.
And then go on to what is community benefit. We wanted to add that language. Did you get that, Scott?
Yes. What I recommend is you defer the second reading of the ordinance and let us bring you back language like we did this week for your consideration at the next meeting.
Let's do that. Everybody's done?
Move to defer?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Nanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to go on to the public comment, general public.
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Chris. I did not mean to do that.
I may not be all the way sure about what this is all about, but I wrote correspondence to the Commission about this, but I just wanted to say a few things. The people of Lawrence want criminal justice reform. We voted against expanding the jail, even though the county threw in the mental health facility as a way to get us to go for it, because mental health is something we are for. We voted against the jail because we want criminal justice reform. Criminal justice reform is not cracking down on college students engaging in a victimless crime. I'm kind of slow at times, so I was just wondering, what exactly will this task force do? The memo in the agenda about it mentioned, like, the task force performing enforcement operations. What exactly does an enforcement operation entail? Would an enforcement operation include cops showing up to a bar and asking everyone for an ID, and then arresting, arresting or ticketing those that don't comply? I believe this is something that cops can legally do, so if cops show enough to bars and making everyone show their IDs is a possibility, then I think we have a right to know. Also, I was, I was wondering what kind of fines and punishment will those who are adults committing a victimless crime face if they get caught. But really, I do want to know if, if police showing up to bars and just asking everyone for an ID is going to be part of this task force operations. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any explanation for that? There we go. Chris.
Good to be in, Commissioner. I'm Captain Casey Cooper with Patrol Division. So I can answer some of those concerns. What this task force says, originally, it's a funded grant from the state of Kansas, and it's a cooperation with us, Kansas University, Public Safety, and also the Alcohol Beverage Control of the State of Kansas. We do every fall, and a fall on initiative, where we go out into the Oriad neighborhood and the downtown area, where we obviously see an influx of college kids or underage drinking. The intent of this program is to go out and try to deter crimes that occur before subjects become extremely intoxicated, or try to stop crimes against these intoxicated subjects. They also go to officers, will go to bars with the ABC. We do this as well on our own, but with this grant and specific to what Mr. Flowers was questioning about, we will go with the ABC typically on these things. The ABC does have a right to go in and inspect a bar because it is a state license that they get. So sometimes they will stand at the door, they will card individuals along with the doorman, and they are looking for fake IDs, which is illegal to possess in any state. They will confiscate the IDs, and citations are generally issued to those individuals, and they're turned away at the door by the establishment. When they go inside the bar, we go, we don't go in and do a raid. We will go in, and we will generally look for some kind of affirmative movement that would capture an officer's belief that maybe something occurred, or an underage drinker was drinking in the bar, got past the doorman with a fake ID, and we'll go contact the individual and ask them to step outside with us, get an ID. And then if they are truly underage or they have a fake ID, again, they are generally issued, noticed up here in municipal court. There are some circumstances where we do issue custodial arrests or conduct custodial arrests, but that's very rare. Generally, that becomes out of noncompliance from the individual or just not being able to ID somebody because they're refusing to do so when it's a suspected crime. But we're certainly not going in and doing any raids on anybody. Maybe to go out there and be proactive and try to deter crime from committing that.
Thank you. All right, open it up to public comment. Any public comment on this item? Okay, bring it back up to here. Any thoughts? I'm fine with the way.
It's a reasonable thing to do.
Yeah.
I move that we approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Lawrence and the University of Kansas, the Kansas Alcohol Beverage Control Division, and the Kansas Traffic Safety Resource Office, creating a task force to address crimes related to underage drinking and fake identification, and authorize the city manager to execute it.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nanda, second by Commissioner Bowley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Now we can move on to the general public comment. The public is allowed to speak to any items or issues except those scheduled on the consent agenda or the regular agenda portions of the agenda after first being recognized by the mayor. Each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. As a general practice, the Commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the Commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments and questions to the Commission. General public comment. Anybody?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ted Boyle, North Lawrence Improvement Association. I'd just like to thank the Commission for finally getting that, those pumps under that underpass and improving the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of North Lawrence. I think a lot of people don't understand when that underpass is closed, that traffic goes through North Lawrence, and, you know, North, Second North, Third Street has about 30,000 cars a day go through there. So if that thing's closed four to six hours, that traffic goes through North Lawrence all the way to North Seventh Street, and then across the tracks and back up Locust Street. And this last one, we had a tractor-trailer jackknife at Seventh and Lyons. And so that sent, and this is during the storm, and I might say I was out driving in it, and I want to definitely give a call out to the mayor, Lisa Larson. She has been over there driving around in it, so she has seen it firsthand of the results. And what happened is, these individuals start driving around North Lawrence during that rainstorm, that last rainstorm, and Lincoln Street had over a foot of water going down, trying to get to the pump station. And Lyons Street was the same way, and then we have a tractor-trailer jackknife at Seventh and Lyons, impeding the traffic. So people are just, boom, going everywhere, trying to get out of North Lawrence, and also first responders. I, when we have a storm over North Lawrence, I want to tell you, I get up and I go out and drive around, see what's happening. And I've seen the first responders in North Lawrence one time, over in the 700 block of Lyons Street. I saw the fire department, they took it up on their cell to drive, and that was three months ago. So we don't have, and people on the north side of the tracks doesn't have accessibility to first responders during a storm when that underpass is closed, and if a train's coming, they can't get across the other side. So this, this underpass is very critical. And, you know, I've been up here talking about this since October of 2017, when the microbursts come through North Lawrence, and, you know, trying to get a backup generator. Now we've got new pumps under the underpass, and they'll be working fine long as we got power going to them. And so I'm still going to beat the drums for, you'll see me up here, trying to get some of that extra $5 million that you all got extra there, and spend it on some capital improvement in North Lawrence. And, you know, we have a natural gas backup generator on the Maple Street pump.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it.
We need one on the underpass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yep. Any other general public comment?
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners, KT Walsh again. This time I'm speaking for the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association. I talked with the head of the Planning Commission about the need for a revamp of the East Lawrence plan. It only needs slight changes to work on design guidelines, and then to do a conservation overlay to protect our neighborhood. He said, "Go every week, go every week, go every week." And so I'll be here every week, asking. I'll also be working hard for candidates that support this for East Lawrence. And I want to remind you, you got the letter from us, but the Historic Resource Commissioners worked for a year, deliberated. It was a hard ethical decision for them to send that letter to you requesting that you tell the head of planning to create some time, some staff time and some help for us to do this process. It will take a while, but we are ready and we are willing. They bypassed Scott McCullough, the head of planning, because he was unwilling to put this on his list of priorities. That was a very hard decision for your commission to make, and they did it, and they were brave. They sent you that letter, and now we, the Neighborhood Association, are asking you, we need this, we need protection. Please consider asking the head of planning to assign staff time. Thank you.
Thank you, KT. Any other general public comment?
Yeah, I'm Chris Flowers. I would just like to say that if we reduce the, the fine for marijuana to a dollar fine, I'd say it's time to reduce the fines for 18 to 20-year-olds caught with alcohol. Thank you.
Any other general public comment? I believe on that, the East Lawrence plan, that's going to be on the part of the planning process in January. You're going to come with a list, is that correct?
After Plan 2040 is adopted, we're going to come with a list of priorities for everybody to discuss and direct us on. Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, no other general public comment. We'll move on to the commission items. We're going to skip over regular agenda item. The executive session's going to be moved to the end of the meeting, and let's go with some agenda items. Future agenda item to add?
Got an email from Bill Tuttle, and the local NAACP is working with Equal Justice Initiative in Montgomery, Alabama, to commemorate the 1882 lynchings in Lawrence, and to remember the three African-American men who lost their lives on that tragic day. We, the NAACP is proposing placing a monument near the site of the lynching, and so they've reached out, and actually, to disclosure, I'm actually a member of that history subcommittee for the marker and the monument. So I'd, I'd like to get that onto our agenda, instead of having to come to the city piecemeal to the Parks people and to, to, just, if we can, you know, take that on and talk about it, I'd appreciate it.
I'm fine with that.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Do we need to vote on that, Sherry? Just add it. Any other future agenda items? How about future work sessions? Number three other items, general items?
I just wanted to mention the scout tour of City Hall. I think we got an email on that, and I think you have that one handled, but that's a real, that's a really fun thing. I have some background in Boy Scouting. They, they've changed the name, and, you know, they're great folks, and appreciate you doing that with them.
Yeah, Porter's going to work on that, or getting that set up. We'll have a tour for the Boy Scouts, which we've done in years past, and it's always an enjoyable day. Any other items before we move on to the city manager's report? Okay, Craig, you're up.
Well, you can see the items in there. There are a couple, the first, a couple are planning reports. One is for the, the monthly, and the other is then for the annual report of business. Have the, have them answer any questions about it.
Any questions on that?
Um, are you, are, are you going to go on, or are you done?
For just that one item? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, those first couple items, but if there's anything else you want to?
Well, I just wanted to address the future work sessions. I know we had discussed having the Sanctuary City Conversation at the September work session, and that has been moved, according to this, to the October work session, and the sidewalk program has been moved to the September work session. And so I wanted to have some conversation around that. I know that this is something that we have a community group working toward, and so if it, if it is a necessity that we bring that sidewalk program because of urgency around that, and I, I understand that we have been requesting that for some time with some urgency, that we work with the groups that are working on these policies to have conversations and dialogue directly in order to ensure that we are able to come when we do have that study session in October with a very strong presentation, and one that really does- really does the work, I think of taking in consideration all of the, the proposals or ideas that we're looking at so that we can have a thorough discussion at that time, rather than a rushed work session. So would that be, and, and I know that would be a question for Craig because it's staff-oriented?
Yeah, I, I think anybody that can offer some guidance or ideas of community expectation or other ideas of things that have been working other places, we'd be, we'd love to consider and have, incorporate into any recommendations we bring forward for your discussion and consideration in October.
Okay, thank you. I think that would be really important and vital to that conversation.
Yeah. If they could just connect with me somehow, then we'll make sure that we set those meetings up.
I'll be happy to make that connection. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else on the city manager's report? Nope. All right, then we will review the calendar items? You wanted to add something, didn't you? With the valor. Was there something you wanted to add, Stuart, to the calendar? Anything else on the calendar? Nope. All right, then we'll move on to the executive session. Consider approving motion to recess into executive session for 30, for approximately 30 minutes to discuss pending litigation and claims pursuant to KSA. Commission will resume its regular meeting in the commission room.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Nanda, second by Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, passes unanimously.
We have nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herbert, a second by Commissioner Nanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, passes unanimously. We're adjourned.
It smells strange in here, doesn't it?